Okay, well, we need to make a provision.
I mean, I don't know what, um, I mean, I guess.
Just take what, just take what, just take what you have on the old one and just put it on the, on the last page underneath the template.
Well, I mean.
So that you have a signature and then our clerk has a signature.
I mean, he can sign it right there where it says signatures if, if you want to just do it and get it out of the way.
That's fine. Okay. There you go. We'll sign it.
Oh, I have this one here.
No, that's a, you can have it.
But it's not stapled, you know, so, but, um, yeah, I just left it on stapled, so I think.
Okay.
Okay, I guess just right here. Thank you.
Toby, did we get anything from, um, Leslie, from the town accountant?
Um, nothing new.
Nothing new?
This is the latest one that I have.
Which is?
From nine thirty?
Nine thirty? No, it's only five after seven. Okay, all right. What I'm interested in is to see how much money there is in the account. Okay, it's still a substantial amount. That's for the engineering.
Okay.
Okay? That's for the engineering, okay, for the OPL project. That's what's left in there. Jolly, jolly, that's what's left in the account for, for, in the engineering for OPL.
Yeah.
Okay?
That's what you've got?
That's what we have right now. They're twelve thousand, okay. We have not received, oh, let's just go in the order. Okay, building inspector, good evening. Come on up. Right up here.
The hot seat.
Okay, I invited the building inspector for, um, monthly update on ninety-two North Main Street construction and the lottery if he has any information on that. So, go ahead and give us your spiel, please.
Okay, I went to ninety-two North Main Street today for the latest and greatest update. Um, they are moving at incredible pace. The sidewalks are in, the grass has been planted, it's a gazebo in the rear, it's, it's complete. Streetlights are in, the shrubs are in, the trees are in, final paving is done. They have a model apartment that's open daily, so thank everyone to go take a look, um, everybody. I, I worked the life in our weekend and took a tour of the model apartment, so, well, I've been there before, anyway.
It's a two-bedroom, two-bath?
Yes.
Right?
Um, so they're doing, you know, really well. The playgrounds are not done yet, that's, I guess, gonna be one of the later things. I was looking for those. Um, in C unit, uh, C building, they have ten units rented. B building, they're, they're doing the finishing touches, punch list, final details, but it's essentially done. A building, um, they should be completed within, I would say, a month.
So by the first of December or middle of December?
Yeah, about a month from now, they should be done.
All right.
Because, um, the fire chief and I went out there, did the smoke detector, fire alarm inspections last week, and he went up today, as my fire chief did, and did some final smoke detector tests up there. And they have two of the three-bedroom units reserved in A building. Do you know, people that want to move in or?
Is that, is that because, is that have to do with the affordables and the local preference, or is it just?
No, it's, they want, people that want a three-bedroom units.
Okay, so it's, it's just the main, the ones that are market valued?
I believe yes, total units there.
Eighty in the whole, in the whole complex, in the, between the three buildings, between A, B, and C?
Right.
Eight, the A building only has, um, eight three-bedrooms, no, six three-bedrooms and eight two-bedrooms? Or is it eight three-bedrooms and six two-bedrooms?
I don't remember.
I know there's only fourteen, fourteen, uh, units.
Units.
And then Unit B is all two bedrooms?
And C is all two bedrooms?
No, two bedrooms and one.
Oh, there's, there's a couple of one-bedrooms, that's right.
Yeah, okay. When they, the, the shrubs, have they, weren't they gonna put some shrubs up between, what is that, Stillwater?
Yes, those are gonna be taller trees, those are not up there.
They're not in yet?
I'm just talking about little shrubs and little trees.
I know that was a big, uh, talk from the meetings.
Yeah, I, um, actually had a meeting, a gentleman that lives on Stillwater was in a, a couple of weeks ago, and we was discussing because he had some trash that had blown across, because the dumpster is there and there's no fence around the other, which will be installed at a later date. And I spoke to Mr. Ali and they had somebody go in, just police area and I care of anything that was over there for him. Where he is, there's no fence.
Right.
What is the rent going to be?
It's, it's.
It varies.
Yeah, it varies on income.
Ballpark.
I, I thought I saw sort of like.
I would say like a one-bedroom is like thirteen, fourteen hundred.
Up to two.
Yeah.
The three-bedroom, the three-bedroom, two baths, the market value is anywhere from, uh, twenty-two thousand to twenty-two forty, I think it is, so.
No, they are rental.
Yeah, they're, the whole complex is all rentals. It's a forty-B project.
Okay. As far as the lottery goes, they did one draw, one round with the lottery. I'm not sure where that stands at this point.
Okay. On those, on the C building, the ten units that are rented, do you know what the breakdown is on that?
I don't.
Okay.
It's, it's all those ten units.
Okay.
So those ten units, people did move in or, or the waiting?
No, they moved in.
Moved in?
Oh, so people already live in in C?
Yes.
What about B?
No, nobody's living in there yet.
And they haven't rented any?
No, I think B is still on the punch list. Yeah, they're still working, so it's still, yeah, and the details, yeah.
So those ten, ten rented apartments are the regular rate?
I'm not sure which, if they're.
Regular rate or, uh, affordable, we don't know.
I don't know.
Anyway, no, that's, doesn't matter though.
Well, in a way, it, it does because we need to know, like, how many of them are the affordable ones and how many were local preference?
Agree, but that, we need to get it from the.
Right, from PIBD.
Builder, yeah, builder.
Right, from PIBD. Now, as far as the trees, I thought all that was gonna be done by the thirty-first of October and.
I, I did too, I thought.
That, that was the arrangement that we made, and I know that, that some of them were planted, but not all of them were planted. So the ones that were on the ground are now planted?
Yes.
Okay. And now, and what about the shrubbery? When is he gonna plant those? I mean, it seems like it's.
Most of the shrubs are planted now.
The, the, the large stuff, because that was what we had lots of complaints about.
Right.
I know, I thought he said it was all gonna be done in September, October because of better planting season?
Right.
So that's kind of my question, because I, I know that the big questions from most of town residents were that the, seeing the building as something that's covering, so, um, was there any, there was no, no date on that yet? Of the, the larger?
I'm not sure.
Can I suggest something?
Sure.
Maybe Toby could send an email, asking directly from the.
Yeah, yeah.
Can we send an email to, uh, Mr. Ali and ask him what the, for the larger?
Right.
Trees, the blocking from Stillwater to the complexes?
Right.
And al, and also Toby, and also, you know, in general update on the building A, building B, building C. Let's hear from him, what he says.
Well, what is it that I wanna ask him?
Just, so launch just updates, updates on all buildings, right?
Yes, general, general update. Say, uh, Mr. Bentley says, you know, ten rented. He may come up and say, oh, I, I rented twenty. So, let's hear from him directly. That's what, hoping the chairman agrees with that.
Yeah. Either that or we can always, we can always send, um, an email to, um, PIBD Properties, because they're the ones.
I don't know who, yeah.
Andrea.
Right?
Adriana Guzzo. She's the marketing director.
It could be quite hard today. I went and talked to the rental company.
Okay, all right.
At the model apartment.
All right, so that's, now, C, obviously C has an occupancy.
Yes.
Certificate of occupancy. Does B have one?
Yeah, I believe it's temporary.
A temporary one, okay. How soon will he be ready to, you know, to?
Anytime.
Anytime, okay. And then A is, that's gonna be a month from now, and then we're gonna make sure that the ASB, the final ASBelt is built, is done, and it goes through COMCOM, it comes through us, and everybody signs off on it, and then he'll get his certificate of occupancy.
He'll get temporary, then the final will be upon all the approvals.
Okay.
All the other departments and.
Okay, that's, that sounds good. Anybody have any, is there anything else that you need to talk to us about?
I was gonna take your update on your neighbor, if you'd like.
Oh, yeah, go ahead. And if anybody doesn't know what he's talking about, it's, it's the old motel.
Ninety Sterling Street.
Yeah.
They have all, either their foundation department, uh, they're working on the yard now, getting that all graded, uh, they wanna get paving into, hopefully get paving in before the weather turns for the winter. They've got one building, which is two units, completely outside done. The siding was finished this evening when I went out there. They were just finishing up the siding and the trim now. Uh, they're gonna be starting the decks on the back of them, on the back of that one.
Right.
Uh, first part next week. So, I would say, as soon as they, you know, the building will be done, the yards and, you know, the landscaping will be ready for people moving in. The, the first building, how many units are going in there?
Sixteen.
Eight, eight, two-plus units.
Eighteen plus. So sixty, total of sixteen units.
How many is that per?
One point four-five acres.
Wow.
And the only reason I know that is because I live directly next door to it.
So this means, you know, they bring in their modular parts and then they can assemble it here. So how many days it takes for a one building? Do you have any idea?
They brought the buildings in.
Are they just brought the whole thing and put it in?
It comes in four pieces.
Four pieces, okay.
And it, within a day of having.
They are assembled.
Four pieces set, because I went out, they were delivered on a Thursday.
Uh-huh.
I went out on a Friday just to view the, the four pods.
Pieces.
To make sure there's no damage in shipping. And then on Monday, they were set.
Okay, so they, it won't take much time to build all, all sixteen?
So when, what, what is his timetable as far as getting all the buildings up? I mean, you're gonna be delivered one building at a, one building at a time?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Can I go back and ask one other question?
Sure, go ahead.
Ninety-two North, in the comprehensive permit and also his, all those, uh, maps, uh, did he ask anything about the sign outside?
Yes.
He has a sign?
That was approved, um, I found that in the original agreement.
Uh-huh.
He actually, it was approved a larger sign than what he put out.
Okay. That was one of the questions, you know, people are asking whether it's a single-family residence over there, how we can put a sign.
It was, it was in a special permit.
Thank you.
Okay, um, I know this is, but because the building inspector is here and it's has to do with, with him, because of all this information, there's an email from, about sixty-two Central Street about the zoning confusion, okay? Um, what's happened now is, is that the chairs of the ZBA, the, uh, planning board, conservation commission, Board of Health, building inspector, and the selectmen are now in a, um, a meeting, in land use meeting, to discuss how we can communicate better and keep people informed. Um, so basically, what, one of the things that we determined when we met two weeks ago was that, um, there would be a general, uh, email sent out to all those boards with the agendas. So, in other words, we'll get all the agendas for those boards, they'll get ours, so that they can see what's going on with our board, in case there's something, you know, that they may want to attend or they may have questions about. And I brought up the fact is, is that as far as the ZBA, when it comes to the planning board, you know, comes to our petitions, when we have petitions, everything has to go out to the planning board, the conservation, and the Board of Health, because they have to reply to us, because it's part of the, part of the zoning bylaw. So, um, so I think what we're gonna do is, on this thing with sixty-two, uh, Central Street, I'm just gonna hold off on that for right now. Um, there's a lot of other information going on with this.
I have to ask one of the issues that's.
Well, what happened was, is the people bought, um, bought this, bought the house.
Is the house next door to the strip mall that's?
Yes, well, it's two doors down.
Oh, two doors down.
Yeah, because there's a business, what is it, what's the guy's name, um?
Oh, yeah, there's a lot there.
Yeah.
The.
Gizzy's or something?
Yeah.
Okay, anyways, so they bought this with, and they were told that it was zoned business, and basically, it's not, to make a nutshell, it's not zoned business, it's zoned general residence, and they wanna put a business. So, there's a lot of confusion about what's going on, you know, why they were told that in two thousand and ten.
And they're trying, are they trying to run a business, or they wanna make change to the property to put a business?
No, they, they want, that's, the whole purpose of buying the property was that they intended to put a business on the property.
Yeah, it's, I guess an email says it was, what, two thousand and fifteen?
Yeah, that's when.
Showed that it was, uh, it's zoned as business?
Yep. But it, but see, the thing is, the thing is, is that there's two different aspects that you can look at. You can look at the GIS, which is what the town uses, and then you have what the, um, the assessor's card, property card. And on their property card, it shows that this property is business.
Okay.
Okay, but it's really not.
Oh, yeah, I understand.
Okay, it's basically, because if you go to us, if you go to the GIS and you look at the color code.
Yep.
Okay, it tells you a different code, it'll tell you on the left-hand, left-hand side, definitely, with the color codes, they tell you what the color codes are. On the left-hand side, it'll tell you, you know, the color, show you the color, it'll tell you what the designation is, okay? The strip mall is business, the other guy is business, and then this one here is resident, uh, general residence.
District, yeah.
Residential.
So are they looking to make changes to the property to make it a business, or them?
Yeah, it looks like they bought it to be business.
Right. Okay, so they bought it and paid a lot of improvements. I live around the corner.
Right, right. So now they did, they did the house, the house is all done. Now they wanna take the, uh, the garage.
Yeah.
And fix that up. But when they came to the building inspector to get a, a building permit, that's when they found out that it's.
It's not a business.
It's not a business zone, it's zoned general residence. So, there's been, and we don't know what, what the outcome, it's still, we're trying to still work out everything.
Just out of curiosity, so across the street where they've got the, uh, the photo studio?
Oh, yeah.
Is that still business?
Have no idea, to be honest with you. I have no idea.
All right, curious.
Yep. Okay, anything else for the building inspector while he's here? Any quidm's quoths, questions? No? All right, Bentley, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Um, like you said, you know, any, if, um, any problems come up, you know, let us know, um, and we'll have, um, VHB go out there. You know, like I said, they went out there for the, um, for the paving. They sent us, I asked Toby to send Wayne an email. He sent us an email, you know, with the report and stuff. So, I'm sure that we'll be.
Do you need this for the, you need this issue?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. One other thing, I guess.
Oh, yeah.
This thing about, uh, Dr. Tajin's property and the zoning infractions? Oh, is that about the letter that you sent to him about, um, his, his fines?
Yeah.
Have you heard anything about that?
I'm not even.
Yeah, you were CC'd off. You were, you didn't send it. Sherry's, uh.
The letter that you sent out.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Have you heard anything from her?
Yes, um, the, the good doctor was in when he got the notice.
Yeah.
And he had all this documentation where this is a, a federal lawsuit against the town, the governor.
The town, the governor.
Catch-up and, um, who else?
The governor's involved in this now, huh?
And, um, just came with catch-up. So anyways, you know, he's, he's got a, a federal lawsuit against everybody, and he said this won't apply. And so, I just told him I respectfully disagree, and I'll be sending this to Worcester, to the court, because he never paid the fine. And if he wants to fight Worcester Court, he can bring his federal documentation to them and prove his case to them, because it's not me to judge if this is, you know, not in effect because it was federal.
So, so in other words, even though, because I know that his house was, was up for auction, and the auction was canceled because he has filed a lawsuit, okay, so now bank can't do nothing about that until the lawsuit is, is resolved. Does that same, does that also apply to, to the town as far as this, the fees? Does that now cease because he has a lawsuit?
I don't know, I'm not a lawyer.
Okay.
So I'm just gonna send it to Worcester and let them sort it out.
All right.
It's housing board.
Yeah, no, I, I understand that, I understand that. I just, I'm just curious, the fact is, like you said, you know, that the auction stopped because of the lawsuit, and I'm, I'm just wondering if that's gonna be the case with this here now?
Maybe they will find that when the house gets, property gets older, they'll, this money will go to them.
Okay.
But, uh, do you, no, but, I'm not clear on that, but why we are sending it to the Worcester courts rather than talking to our town attorneys?
Because the fine is for zoning violations?
Totally agree, I, I understand, fully understand. The way I understand is, as the chairman said, the auction was on, it was stopped, because, uh, Mr. Dr. T filed a complaint or filed a case against, uh, Hoover, the auction was stopped. So, will that, the same thing will apply for the fine also? That's my, I don't know, I'm not a liar, Tor, like you.
But maybe, maybe the suggestion would be, is before you send it off to the Worcester Land Court, okay, I would maybe, I, I would just suggest that maybe you should touch base with the town administrator, and maybe she can touch base with, uh, KP Law to find out if, you know, I mean, there's no sense sending it off there if nothing, you know, if this is, it's automatically stopped.
If it is not their matter, they are not going to.
Right, because they may, you know, like you said, they may come back and say, hey, we can't do nothing because he has a lawsuit, but, you know, let's find out. I mean, does that make?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, you know. Instead of, you know, instead of giving a fine, instead of doing all this, uh, lot of work for you, lot of work for the Worcester, maybe, you know, let's.
Because if, because what might happen also too is, is that they may go back and say, okay, well, if, from the date that he filed the lawsuit, that's when the fines may have, may, may stop. I don't know for sure. But that's something that I would think that KP Law should be able to, you know, you know, help you out with. So.
Maybe Chris could add on something, if you, law experience.
No, yeah, I think going to, uh, the town administrator and just asking that question is.
Not reliable.
Makes sense. It's, it's not, it's not in my wheelhouse, unfortunately.
Well, just keep us informed of what's, you know, what, what happens, you know. I mean, not that we have any direct, you know, we can do anything about unless he files something with us against you. But, you know, this all started back in February, you know, we tried to be, you know, try to do something, you know, decent, try to help him out, and he has not responded to that. It's, you know, basically, it's, the ball's in your court, this is your show, you run it how you see fit, you know, according to the laws and stuff. All we're asking is just, just to keep us abreast of, you know, what happens, you know, what's going on. And if there's anything that we can help you with, we'll be more than happy to help you with.
Okay, to, to add on to that, you know, so, I know that you did issue a fine, but I do understand some of the residents might want to know whether we issue a fine, if those fines are collected, or whether the, you know, is this issue, even the issuing the fine is, uh, legal, you know? So, we, when the call comes to your office, you know, you can say, hey, this is what happened, I can issue a fine, I cannot issue a fine, this is, the status is like that. So for you also, it's very, if you get the clear answer, can we issue a fine?
We can.
During these situations?
I just got, yeah, I'm just not sure about, because of.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, you know, just to check in with the, our town admin.
Yep.
As well as, you know, whatever he suggests, that's fine with me.
Like Raj said, you know, if somebody calls you, you know, at least you'll have an answer saying, okay, well, he filed a lawsuit, you know, according to town council, you know, whatever they, whatever information that they provide to you, you know, this is what we can do, this is what we can't do.
Okay.
That will really good look on you, uh, in the building.
Okay.
You would probably give the town a ring.
Okay, and then, of course, our friend Bernie, Bernie Dow.
I, I think Raj's making a point just for.
That's for that, yes.
Right, because he had made a couple of calls in his email, so I think, probably for someone to give him, he's probably gonna call again.
But he needs to get ahold of town council.
Right.
Find out from town council, so that when, if somebody does call, he'll have the correct information and not just say, I'm not sure. You know, you can say, this is what, what we were told to do, okay? Anything else? Raj, anything else?
No, nothing else. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. We'll see you next month. Like you said, if anything comes up, let us know, you know, if there's anything that you need from us that we can help you with, we're more than happy to help you.
Okay.
Truganay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a nice, long weekend.
Thank you.
Indeed.
Okay, the next thing on the agenda is the tentative calendar for two thousand and eighteen, the ZBA meetings, okay? I know, I asked Toby to, to do this. We received an email from Nancy Lusier, um, because she needs to know, um, about what's going on, you know, with our meeting, so that she can set up the room schedules, you know. Also too, everybody else knows what's going on too for next year, okay? So I asked Toby to make this out, send it out to everybody before the meeting, so that you can look it over, and then when we come to the meeting tonight, we can discuss. Does anybody have any issues with any of these dates?
Not me.
It's all, uh, the third Thursday.
Third Thursday of the month.
Every month, nothing's changed.
At seven o'clock.
Should be fine with me.
So work?
Work's right.
Okay. You know, and, and what will happen is, is if, because we're on a limited budget now, as far as, you know, taking care of business, if we get to the point where we get close to one of these, and the date, and we don't have a public hearing, and we don't have any essential, you know, important business going on, then we can cancel, you know, cancel the meeting. And like we did last month, we canceled it because there was nothing going on. So, basically that's, so nobody has any problems?
No.
Okay. All right, so Toby, if you can make sure that tomorrow or whenever, get a copy to, to Nancy, the town clerk, Karen Parry, and, um, the, uh, the TV station, okay? All right, okay, takes care of that. Okay, now, the important stuff. Not that every, not that everything we have is important. All right, um, we did receive, um, from the town clerk, the, um, that there were no appeals on our last two petitions. The one for, um, uh, Woodland Street and the one for Mr. Dumas for the home occupation, okay? Now, the problem, the, the thing with the home occupation is, is that he needs to do a declaration of covenant. Now, what I'm, what I'm having an issue with is that when this bylaw, or this, this zoning bylaw was put into effect, a declaration of covenant, you know, it's mentioned through the bylaw, but one was never created, which, you know, doesn't seem, seems kinda strange to me. Anyways, so, I reached out to the town administrator, she reached out to, to, uh, town council, and I believe that Toby forwarded to you, um, what the town council, and we've had conversation on this, um, the vice chair and I had a conversation on this. We did receive, town council did send us a copy, oh, here it is, from Sherborne, okay? So, what we're gonna do is, um, providing that he's willing to do this, is have Mr. Olson review this and see if, you know, what kinda changes, do you have a copy of it?
Yeah.
Okay, the one from Sherborne? Okay, there you go.
Yeah.
And just kind of apply it to our bylaws, okay?
Yep.
And as soon as you can get that done, we'll.
I can do that.
Email it to everybody on the board. They'll get back to Toby, you know, looks good, fine. And then Toby, once that is done, then you can contact Mr. Dumas, and he'll come in and you'll have to give him a copy of the decision, the, um, there's no, there's been no appeal, and a copy of this, and they'll have to go to the registry of deeds and get it stamped and bring it back to us, okay? Sound good?
Yep.
Okay, anybody have any questions?
I don't see a.
What?
I do not see a notice, not. I do not see a notice, not a public signature. This needs to be not raised, if I remember correctly from the.
You can.
I'll look into it.
Yeah, you can use the one that we use for, for accessory apartments and maybe incorporate that.
So it has to be not raised.
Okay.
Do we have this document in electronic format?
No. Um, wait, when she sent the email, right, it was, it was an attachment, correct?
It was a board document.
Okay.
PDF?
I think I had, yeah.
It was a PDF, right?
No, a board.
Yeah.
It's a board form, so it can be altered.
Okay, so can you?
Yeah, I don't know if I have that or not, I, I might have missed it, but could you send that to me?
Email that to him?
Perfect.
Okay, good. All right. And, you know, use your judgment.
Yep.
You know, whatever you feel needs to be done in there.
Okay.
So, and then just get it to us and then we can get it to Mr. Dumas.
Fair enough.
That he can do what he needs to do. Okay, all right, so that takes care of that. Okay, the, like I said, we had the land use meeting, I know that there was something here, what did I do with it?
Can I send the file with the Central Street stuff?
Oh, yeah, okay.
The Central Street, yeah?
Yep, land use meeting, okay. We did, there was an email sent out to the following boards and to the town administrator, and it came from Diane Peterson, who's the assessor. And I don't know if anybody had a chance to, to look at this. She will also be part of our, this group that's gonna meet, because we need to, we need to make sure that everybody's using the same information. You know, that it's not saying one thing on one, not saying another thing on the other. You know, the planning board is really, you know, getting down, saying that, you know, people need to be using the GIS because that's the proper.
Yeah, it's the, it's really the, the town zoning map. That, that controls all that, that's. And so it's some, on some level, there's gonna have to be an analysis of each of the lots and are they consistent in the town's assessor's records with what's on the town zoning map?
Right, exactly, exactly. And the, and she has assured me that whatever corrections need to be made, you know, provide, you know, as long as we provide the information to the assessor's office, they'll make sure that the corrections get, get done, so.
I'm happy to hear that's moving forward.
Yep, yep. Okay, Toby, any miscellaneous mail and paperwork that we need to sign?
The financial report, uh, there's nothing to sign. It was just, I don't know, this was just some stuff. I don't know why they sent it to us, but.
I'll send it to Phil.
The watershed.
I'll send it to Phil.
Yeah, I'm not really sure.
Protecting our watershed.
This I have to, this I just have to file. But this was just information on area businesses that are renewing their licenses. And I guess they wanted to know if we have anybody that's not in compliance with us, but. I didn't think I needed to, to make that for everybody, but.
Oh, this is, this is the, this is the letter that, that they sent out.
Usually it's more planning board kind of issues, right? With site plans and.
Yeah. But I guess SPR process.
Yeah. All planning board. I mean, do, are we aware of any special permits or variances that have been granted by this board recently? Where there are also businesses that are seeking licenses before the.
Well, Cumberland Farms, they had to come before us to get.
Is there anything outstanding with regard to?
Not that I know of.
I, I wouldn't think so, right?
Yeah.
It was the operating hours, it was the.
The gas station.
Yeah.
And then the, not playing the, you know, how you go to these gas stations.
Music and the audio.
You know, and they had to get a, they had to get a special permit for us to operate between two in the morning and six in the morning.
Yeah.
So.
I mean, I wasn't on the board at that time, but I don't know that there's anything outstanding, right?
Not that I know of, unless they got the problem with the sign, you know?
Yeah, I think that's.
Raj, have you been up to ninety-two North Main Street?
No.
No? Okay, so you haven't seen the sign, I mean, you've just heard that there's a sign?
I've seen the sign.
Okay.
Sign is in the road.
It's on the road?
Anybody go on to one ninety and see the sign?
Oh.
Do I?
I have seen all the.
Anybody go on to one ninety and see the sign?
Oh, I have seen the sign.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's.
Does it look, does it look like it's bigger than what it's supposed to be?
I don't know, I, I didn't know that we have approved the sign, you know?
Okay.
So.
All right.
I'm not very pleased with the sign, but, you know, that's what he wanted. It's like a white board. I think, you know, the night, he put it for the nighttime.
Okay, does it say?
Ninety-two North, yes.
Okay, it says ninety-two North Main Street?
I think so.
Okay, we'll have to go up there and look.
I think so.
All right, I'll have to go up there and look.
Why did? Nighttime, you know, if they put the lights, the sign will be, you can see the sign, that's. But the daytime, because of the white background, white, like a plexiglass kind of a thing, the letters are not, you know.
Great, yeah, yeah. How, how bright is it, have you seen it at night?
I haven't seen it at night, it's, I haven't seen it in dusk.
Hopefully it's LED.
I have no idea.
I can just see something coming to the board for that.
Oh, it's probably not the bright, yeah.
How bright is, if the neighbors?
Yeah, it's, aesthetically, I don't like the design, but if not you.
You said you read, you went back and read it?
No, I didn't.
Read the, the competency permit?
No.
For the sign?
No.
Okay.
He, Bentley said he saw it.
Yeah.
It sounds, it sounds like it was a while back.
No, I need to ask the building's commissioner to look into it.
Okay.
But I did not look at that, because he has more document than what is in that competency permit.
It's very modern, it's not, it's a little jarring, like, oh, damn, you've got all these, like, old properties in there.
Toby, you have a copy of that, that binder that Dean Harrison had given to us? You know, that have all the things in there? If you, when you have a chance, can you look in that binder and see if there's, see what it says in there about the sign? I think there was a, there's a tab for the sign. If you could kinda dig that out and scan it and send it to everybody so that they can see, so that we can just kinda, you know? Because I'm curious now that, you know, that they changed the name of the.
R in a Toby, instead of going through all the pain, maybe talk to the building inspector. It looks like he looked at it.
Okay.
So maybe it's so easy to get.
Do that then.
I think he said it was in the competency permit.
Right.
It is, but. So we'll go look in that.
Yeah, okay.
If we have trouble, you know, talk to the building inspector.
Okay, anybody have anything, future agenda items or ZBA reports? Raj, anything from?
So we have no meeting, uh, December, right?
Right, no meeting, unless, unless a permit shows up. Now Toby, if we, okay, if we were having a meeting in December, it would be the third Thursday, which would be the twenty-first, okay? If somebody was gonna put in a petition and they wanted to be heard, what would be the latest date that they could get it in?
Okay, what, the twenty-first is that Thursday?
Yeah.
So it's gonna be in the newspaper two weeks before.
So the seventh and the fourteenth?
Seventh, fourteenth, and there's no holidays in between there, so. Uh, they would have to get it to me, um, the latest, the Monday of that week. I mean, that's like the, the latest, because I gotta send it to the newspaper.
So really, right around December first is about, is, is close to pushing it?
Seven, six, five, fourth of December.
Yeah, that would be like the latest.
Weekend in there too.
Okay, so.
Now you rather have it.
Exactly.
Like a Friday before, you know, just, yeah.
Yeah, because December first is a Friday.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so December first, okay, so let's keep an eye on that, okay? And you'll have to let us know, if nothing shows up.
Then that's, yeah, it's too late, so.
It's too late, then they'll have to, you know, they can submit, but they won't get heard until, until January.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, that sounds good. Anything from fiscal or planning board that you wanna talk about? Selectmen, no, okay. Anybody else?
No.
No. Charlie's enjoying his retirement? Okay. Anything that we didn't, not received by the board prior? I know that we can't act on anything, but is there anything that we need to maybe talk about that we might have to discuss the next time?
Yeah, there's no more mail.
Okay, all right. There, unless there is a petition, there is no scheduled meeting for December. Our next meeting will be January eighteenth of two thousand and eighteen, okay?
Happy New Year.
Yeah. So before we, before we adjourn, I just wanna take this opportunity to wish everyone a, a very happy and safe Thanksgiving. If you're traveling, just be careful. If you're staying home, enjoy yourself, try not to eat too much, I know that's kind of a hard thing to do, but on Thanksgiving, because it's about the only time of the year that I really enjoy turkey. I couldn't care less about eating any other time, but Thanksgiving is the best time to eat it. So we just wanna make sure that everybody has a, you know, a safe and, and happy holiday, okay? I'll tend, and if there's nothing, no other business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Okay, you have a motion, anybody have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.